All right. Hello, everyone. Welcome to the October meeting of the City of Binghamton Planning Commission. My name is Nick Corcoran. I'm currently the chairman of this commission, which is comprised of local community members tasked with reviewing site plans and special use permits for consistency with the standards and criteria set forth in the City of Binghamton code. Based on our total number of planning commission members, four members must be present to constitute a quorum. Tonight, we have six members, which means we do have a quorum and can proceed. First item on our agenda is roll call. Mario De Fulvio is not here yet. Joe D'Angelo. Chris Judgeeats.
Here I am, rocking like a hurricane.
Thank you. Kelly Weiss.
Present.
Manny Priest.
Here.
And Steve Cipresson. All right. Second item on the agenda is approval of last month's minutes. Anybody see anything that was in error on those minutes?
I was not present, but I did watch the live stream, so everything looked on the up and up.
All right. All right. Anybody want to make a motion to approve the minutes? Motion by Joe, second by Kelly, all in favor? All right, six in favor, zero opposed. All right. Chris.
Before we start, do I see a number of students from either BCC or SUNY Broome who are here? What class you guys hear from? The aspects of planning, is that the only class? Is there other classes? Okay. I just want to offer, if you have questions about what's going on here tonight that you want us to hang around afterwards, feel free to hang around afterwards.
All right. Excellent. All right. Next item on the agenda are seeker determinations. In this portion of our meeting, the planning commission will be reviewing documentation provided by applicants for the first time. Applicants will be called to the microphone where they will be asked to make a presentation describing their plans to the commission. Commission members may then ask questions of the applicant to clarify any items that are unclear. After all questions have been answered, the commission will deliberate and then either set a public hearing date for the project or request additional information before proceeding. To all applicants that will be presenting tonight, we ask that you please state your name and address for our records before beginning your presentation. And we ask that any member of your team who will be speaking, please give their name and address for our public record. All right, tonight, our first seeker determination is for the applicant AOW Construction. The project address is 439 Court Street. And this is a site plan review and special use permit for the establishment of a cannabis retail business in an existing commercial building in the C1 Service Commercial District. Welcome. Is it green? Is the light green on there? All right. That's all right. Greg will check for you.
How's that?
Perfect. And you got to go and get right up close to it.
Okay, there we go. How's that?
Beautiful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, so we are proposing a retail cannabis dispensary in the guidelines, uh, within the OCM guidelines at 439 Court Street in the zoning district C1, which is a, uh, I understand is a established district within Binghamton for retail cannabis. We propose no site modifications. Uh, we're going to use the existing site as is. The bulk of our work is inside the existing facility. Plan on renovating about 2,500 square feet of the space. There'll be some space left vacant for future expansion, uh, for break room or, um, other, you know, facilities that the licensee that takes over the space sees fit. AOW is the design build contractor hired through DASNY, the Dormitory Authority State of New York, who's running the program that we are working with. I can briefly walk you through the drawings if you'd like to show you the. So as I said, our site is going to remain as is. There's adequate parking. The dumpster location won't change. The fencing around the dumpster won't change. Uh, it'll all remain as is. Uh, this is, as many of you may know, the former ANW Root Beer location or NW Restaurant. Uh, we plan to fully gut the interior, uh, take out all the existing equipment that remains. And it will become a retail store. Uh, there'll be a secured entrance on the side there. Uh, through the OCM guidelines, you need to come into a secured entrance, have your ID checked, go through the security guard, then you can enter into the sales floor. Customers only allowed in the sales floor area. The back of the house is for employees only. There's a vault, uh, that'll store the product reinforced with wire mesh and abuse resistant, um, sheet rock. What else? Uh, primarily acoustical ceilings throughout the place, uh, hard ceilings in the vault area to keep the hardened construction. This is a rendering of what the interior should look like, uh, modern finishes, millwork, uh, you know, neutral paint colors for the most part. Some pendant lighting to dress it up and, um, LVT or polished concrete floors. That is our proposal. Any questions? Any more information?
All right. Chris?
Um, just out of curiosity, I know that building's been abandoned for quite some time. What is, how bad is it as far as rehab for this construction project? It's in great condition. Uh, I've been through the building, uh, the roof, the roof is great, the mechanical, the existing mechanicals are great. Uh, it actually looks like you could, if you cleaned it up, you could open it right back up. Uh, it's in really good condition.
Does the drive-through window stay operational?
The drive-through window is going to stay operational.
Wow.
For pickups only.
So we don't even have to get out of our cars?
Don't even have to get out of your car.
Somebody would not have.
You, let's just say your, your, your friends could order on the app and could just swing through the drive-through pickup.
Right.
Yes.
That's awesome. Does anywhere else do that around here or?
I don't believe so.
Yeah.
It is allowed through OCM, uh, and because this location has it, they figured, why not keep it?
Great. All right. Any other questions, concerns? Pretty straightforward. How much is changing? All right. Uh, I'll make a motion that the proposal involves the reuse of an existing building, which is a type two action under seeker and no further environmental review is required. Second by Manny, all in favor? All right, six in favor, zero opposed. And I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the project at 5:20 at our November meeting. Second by Steve, all in favor? All right, six in favor, zero opposed. All right, so we'll see you back in November and we'll have a public hearing and see if anybody comes to talk about the project.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, our next seeker determination is for the applicant mothers and babies. The project address is 33 to 41 Whitney Ave. This is a site plan review for the construction of a 5,520 square foot social services building in the I3 Heavy Industrial District.
How we doing today?
Good. How are you?
Good. I'm Mike Masiak. I own Robinson Street Plaza, basically. Where the parcel is on Whitney Ave, the Walter Ave, basically, is the houses I just knocked down on Whitney Ave a couple of weeks ago. And the site is for mothers and babies we're looking at, and it's a 5,000 square foot building. Basically, shouldn't have rolled it up that way, but basically it sits right next to the Robinson Street Plaza, but it's mostly closer to Whitney Ave than it is to the plaza itself. And basically, they've been anxious to do it, but we had a few altercations that they had to go through to get it planned out and, uh, we're looking forward to having them as a new building, on a new building, an old site to make the east side a little bit prouder. And I got four other tenants getting ready to make me deals on the old Rite Aid and the fitness center and the other area and clean it all up for, uh, big size tenants, which would be great for the site. And this will create more parking. And I, as of today, I just watched a piece of property next to a door to me on Walter Ave, another 40 feet, basically just to tie into my old Rite Aid so I can have a garage door in the back or whatever they have to do to unload instead of taking up the parking lot down with trucks.
All right. All right. Any questions about the application? Chris?
Hi, the staff report, uh, is recommending that the parcels for 33, 35, 39, and 41 Whitney Ave be combined. Um,
Oh, they will.
If you're willing to do that and work with, yes, tax department, make sure.
The only one that won't be combined will be the separate one Walgreens that we built. That's got a separate deed and everything.
Okay.
But everything else is going Robinson Street Plaza.
Okay.
And then if I got to talk to them tomorrow, tell them I just done the deal with them today for the other 40 feet behind us to make sure that it gets included with their rezoned. So I'll talk to Tito in the morning to make sure he's aware of it.
All right. Uh, the site plans, they just have a note on the back area fenced in area called play area. What's, what's happening back there?
That's actually future area. They're talking about putting a playground for the kids, for the mothers and babies in the back part there. That's why in the end result, we'll know exactly how we're going to lay it out. The building, whether we're going to push it back a little bit, put the play area in the front to get more parking or turn the building the other way, but we'll know that in the next three days if I get to go ahead to get moving for them.
Okay. All right. So for the final approval, you might have a slightly different plan, but it's more or less the same.
Yeah, we were held up on that other 40 feet that I wanted to make it almost 200 feet on the Walter Ave side to the, what do you call, so.
Gotcha.
It would probably be no big deal to turn everything and give us a lot more parking, which would be good for the whole facility over there.
Okay.
I just want to point out for new construction, uh, except for residential buildings, uh, parking lot in front of the building is not permitted. So you cannot put a parking lot between the front side of the building and the street. So i- if you really needed to do that for your design, you would have to go to the zoning board to get a variance. Um, but what the code, um, allows is a parking lot behind the building.
And it looks like you're working with Keystone for your plans or?
Yes.
Okay, so they probably know all that.
All right.
Yeah.
As you said, to figure out, it started out to be an 8,000 foot building, but then they got, we got held up and they couldn't commit to 8,000 feet. They only they downsized it to 5,500 square feet to fit their needs.
Gotcha. Do you think by the time you have, we have the next meeting, you'd have pretty much everything solidified into a, a final plan?
Yes.
Okay. Just because when you make changes after you get the approval, then you'd have to come back and, you know, it would just would save time if you've got it all figured out right from the start. Okay. All right. Any other questions, comments, concerns? All right. Uh, seeing no other questions or comments. Uh, I'll make a motion that the proposal is an unlisted action under seeker and that the planning commission should act as lead agency for seeker review. All right, second by Manny, all in favor? Six in favor, zero opposed. And I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the project at 5:25 at our November meeting. All right. Second by Chris, all in favor? All right, six in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, our last seeker determination tonight is for the applicant, uh, Gian Van Buren. The project address is 43 Riverside Drive. This is a site plan review and special use permit to allow a home bed and breakfast in the R1 Residential Single Unit Dwelling District.
I'm more anxious tonight than I was when I worked with all the law officers and SWAT teams de-escalating homicide, suicidal people with weapons.
There's nothing to be nervous about today.
I know. It, this means a lot to me because I live alone. I'm going to be 74 in a few weeks. And I have no relatives here. My only son died two years ago. And this will be, it'll provide me with company. And, um, um, I live in an 1890 house. It was on the Preservation Society tour last year. And, um, it's Queen Anne Victorian. There's an article I could quote you from, from the, um, Los Angeles Times where they discuss Airbnbs and the current thought is they improve cities. Um, and they, um, bring visitors into communities that ordinarily wouldn't come in. And, um, they're a lot prettier than hotels. Um, plus, um, I do background checks on people I meet. I still, I have an app for background checks. I would be background checking everybody that comes to visit me. I don't want to do long-term. A lot of people do three months at a time with a nurse or, um, hospital worker. I don't want to do that. Um, I, um, I prefer people in the arts or education college, but both because I have to live there too. And I only plan to really use one of my bedrooms out of the six. Um, I do have possibility of using two bedrooms, but I prefer one bedroom. I don't like that much company or cooking. I have, I'll have to get used to making breakfast again. Um, like I say, there'd be no long-term people. And most people would most likely be arriving by bus or plane. Um, that's been my experience talking. There's other Airbnbs in my neighborhood in the R1. Also, where I live, I live on the corner of Murray Street Riverside Drive. Across the street from me is a multiple with college students. And, um, beside me on Murray Street was supposed to be a single family and the buyer from New York City lied to the realtor who lives on my street on Murray Street. Um, and said she was going to be inhabiting it, but there, for two years now, we've had students. And this person doesn't mow her lawn, take, nothing's ever been done to the back lawn and the owners before her were quite well-known. One was an actress in England, the other one was a professor. They both died. But they had English gardens and it was beautiful. Now it's just overrun with weeds and stuff. So my point is I keep my place very neat. I just spent $5,400 to improve the exterior. It's mostly brick, but I improved all the peaks.
All right.
On the third floor outside. Um, so I'm interested in earning back some savings, um, that I nearly depleted during that job. And this will give me extra cash. It'll give me company. Um, and as I said, some cities have decided that Airbnbs really, really improve their community. Um, bring more people into to shop at shops and restaurants, whatever. Um, I live right next door to the temple Beth David. And whenever they gather, there's always a police guarding it. So I have a lot of police in my, I have police that live in my neighborhood too, but it's a very safe neighborhood, you know, but you know, I was an Orthodox Jew at that temple for years. So across from me is a multiple going down one block, actually two blocks going east is multiples, student housing and businesses. Um, so I feel that, um, my house is consistent with the neighborhood. I strongly feel my house is consistent with the neighborhood. I talked to a couple attorney friends and they told me to mention that. And, um, there's a dental office across the street from me. And dental employees park on Murray Street. Instead, because they leave their parking lot open for their patients. Um, and there are more student rentals down Murray Street. And one student rental on the opposite side of me by next to the shul, the temple. Um, they barely mow their lawn and they have a shovel and whatever hanging on the wall or their porch. It's just, if the two student rentals beside me, across the street and beside me, they have ghetto porch furniture. Excuse, I shouldn't say that. That's not allowed now. They have, um, not very nice things on their porch.
Okay.
Um, and I feel that my house is an asset to the neighborhood. And I would like the company, now, not a lot of times, now and then, it would be nice. I have no relatives here. Um, I think that's all I have to say. That was enough.
All right.
Oh, and, um, I told you, I was on the Preservation Society tour last year, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I plan on keeping the house preserved the way it originally was. It's my mission. Thank you very much.
All right. Uh, hold on one second.
Oh, that's right.
Um, anybody have any questions about, uh, yeah, Chris?
Hi.
Hi.
Um, so just a bit of a little clarification here. Um, in the staff report, it mentions that there are five bedrooms on the floor plan. Some, and Tito, we can speak to this, some real property IMO program consisting four bedrooms for the property. You've mentioned here six bedrooms.
Right.
Can you clarify how many bedrooms there are?
Sure. On the second floor, 17 stairs up are three, let's think about this, four bedrooms. Um, there are two guest rooms and my bedroom, and then another bedroom was converted to a laundry room um, before me. Um, and on the third floor, there are two bedrooms and an attic, which I never use. They're just full of my junk. Um, and I don't ever plan on using those. The stairs are very steep. And I'm always concerned about being sued. My family were lawyers, so I don't want people going up and down those steep stairs. So I only plan, I'm really using one bedroom, occasionally two bedrooms. And I don't have couples stay with me. I don't plan on that. So it would be one person or two people.
Okay. Tito, let me ask this as procedural. What information do you need from the applicant to reconcile bedroom numbers based on the staff report comment?
I think I drew a map. It's not very good. I don't know if they showed it to you, but also when the house was appraised and whatever, when I bought it, um, I entered all of that information. So there are pictures of all the rooms. And there is a map of all the rooms. That's much better than my map.
Uh, more than four bedrooms is not permitted without special use permit, so.
I'm not using four bedrooms.
Okay.
So I just said, I'm only going to rent out one most of the time and maybe two. Oh, I'm so sorry.
So the attic bedrooms sound like they're, they're probably not legally established. Um, that doesn't necessarily have to be part of this application if, if the guest rooms are not located on that floor. It's something that we could look at independently.
I'm not sure what you're talking about. Uh huh. So you understand that there's only two bedrooms I would let people stay in.
Maybe a possible solution to this. Um, before you come back for a public hearing, the, uh, hand drawing that was, or the, 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 I want to call this the floor plans, thank you Greg, that were submitted. Maybe if those could be redone as a second draft that labels bedroom one.
Okay.
Bedroom two.
All right.
Laundry room, not a bedroom.
Okay.
Those types of things. So that way we have.
Yeah, it's pretty simple.
Okay.
There's three bedrooms and a laundry room on the second floor and the upstairs bedrooms have no furniture in them and I don't plan on using them. They're not heated. They're not air-conditioned.
So the, the floor plan, if they were to approve this floor plan, that would be legally binding. So it's important that it's accurate. So if, before the next meeting, if you could give us a revised floor plan that does not show bedrooms on the third floor and that labels the rest of the rooms appropriately.
So you don't want me to map out the attic and the bedrooms upstairs on the third floor?
Those should not be bedrooms.
They're not. They don't even have furniture. And like I said, they're not heated. They're not air-conditioned.
Okay, so the floor plan should not show bedrooms. Uh, it, it's labeled bed, there are two bedrooms noted on the third floor of the floor plan.
Servants used to stay there. That's, well, those were for servants sadly. That's why the stairs, servant stairs, you know, are always terrible.
Sure.
They're narrow and steep.
So that, you should submit that revision before the next meeting.
All right.
Yeah, you could probably just white out that, the top floor and.
Yeah, I think I'll take that professional drawing, not my one that I turned in, and I'm just going to label that. I'll make a photocopy and label that.
Perfect. All right.
I could also take photographs of the laundry room and the bedroom.
Yeah. So Tito, if the application drops down to only three bedrooms, does she even need a review?
Yeah, she needs a special use permit for the bed and breakfast use. Um, that, that's what's prompting the application.
So do you think I'll get that permit?
Um, it's hard to say. So that's, so we'll have this meeting today. And then we'll probably schedule a public hearing for the project for the next meeting.
What might prevent me from getting a permit?
Well, um, so at the next meeting, let's say all of your neighbors came out and they were completely against this for some reason, for, for some reasons that we've not heard from you or something. Uh, we would take that into consideration. You know, yeah, there, there is a checklist which Tito could share with you.
That'd be nice.
Um, about the different, uh, things we have to look at. So for example, standards for site plan review, movement of vehicles and people, public safety, off-street parking, uh, lot size and density, building size, landscaping, drainage, sight lighting, operational characters, characteristics, architectural features, compatibility with the general character of the neighborhood, which you pointed out. And any other considerations that were related to health, safety and general welfare of the public.
I'll just add, I have fire extinguishers on both floors. And I also bought really expensive, I talked to the fire chief that I used to work with. He's my friend. He suggested what I should buy for best fire alarm, smoke alarms, and I had them all, all installed.
Yeah. All right. That's excellent.
Because I'm concerned about my own safety too.
Yeah.
How many bedrooms would you be using? Is it one or two?
Two. Most of the time, one. The second one is my office studio that converts to a bedroom, but I don't like to use it. I, I prefer just using one bedroom.
Will the special use permit designate a specific number that should not be able to rent out more than two bedrooms?
Yeah, that's cool. I like.
Yeah, that could be a condition of approval.
I'm not into making breakfast for more than two people. Or cleaning up after people.
All right. And Tito, the site plan or the staff report says three parking spaces are required. And I'm guessing that was based on five bedrooms. So if it drops down to three bedrooms.
Two.
Well, your, your bedroom would.
Oh, my bedroom counts.
Would count, yeah. Does that change the parking requirement?
Yeah, she would need three bedrooms, uh, three parking spaces.
She still needs three parking spaces.
Yes.
Interesting, because the students next door park on the street. And they, I think there's three or four cars. And.
So do we have the ability to waive the parking requirement?
Uh, yeah, up to 50%.
Up to 50%.
Because the, the most, if there are any cars, there'll be one car extra.
Yeah.
Um, I have a driveway.
Yeah.
That I park in.
So I guess the question for the planning board then, I mean, from my point of view, with the location next to the, um, the temple, there's not a ton of parking on that street most of the time, from what I've witnessed. Um, is. Um, is how does everybody feel about waiving a parking requirement of three parking spaces? For this project, or would you want to see something different?
You know, even when there's off-street parking, there, nobody's had a problem finding parking.
Yeah.
It might be a little trickier now that the students next door has several cars, but it's never been a problem.
Okay.
Sorry, just wanna add one thing. Uh, the code allows a complete waiver of the parking requirement for local landmarks, which this is.
Oh.
That's wonderful.
Okay. How does everybody feel about that? Uh, you say go for it? Are Kelly's okay with that? Joe, Manny, you, Chris, you look.
I tend to be a real stickler on parking regulations, so I, I like to reserve the right to consider a waiver if that's discussed at the next meeting.
Okay. Alright.
And you know, nobody parks on Riverside Drive hardly, except my neighbor. Parks his truck, but there's always that option too.
Okay. Alright, well, so there's, there is a three-car parking requirement, but it does look like we're not formally voting tonight, but it does look like there's a general consensus that everyone is okay with granting you a waiver from having to do those.
That's wonderful. And like I say. Many people will be taking the bus or a plane.
Okay. Alright. Alright, any other questions, concerns?
So, Tito, I also noticed that in the staff report, there is a reference to a previous application that was approved. This is the top of page two. A previous application approved for another address on Riverside Drive. I see that's in there. Are, is there some sort of we need to be aware there should be only so many applications approved in a certain neighborhood size or something?
No, we just, in the staff reports, we add, um, in that section, relevant, uh, recent planning decisions.
That's my neighbor.
So if it's nearby or it's a similar use, we'll, we'll put it in there.
A precedent. Alright, seeing no other questions or comments. Um, alright, I'll make a motion that the proposal involves the reuse of an existing residential building, which is a type-two action under SEAKER and no further environmental review is required. Second by Kelly, all in favor? Alright, that's six in favor, zero opposed. And I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for this project at five thirty at our November meeting. Second by Kelly, all in favor? Alright, six in favor, zero opposed. Alright, so we'll see you back.
Who I send that map to?
Uh, send everything to Tito.
Where's Solon? If you've been communicating with Solon, you can send it to him as well.
That's why I ran.
Uh, yeah.
Ah, perfect. And then we'll see you back in November and we'll have a public hearing and see if anybody comes to talk about the project.
Alrighty, thank you so much.
Alright, thank you. Alright, that concludes seeker determinations. So now on to our next part of our meeting, which is public hearings and final deliberations. In this portion of our meeting, we will be holding open public hearings to obtain public opinion in regard to specific projects that are up for review. The applicants will be asked to come to the microphone and make a brief presentation describing their project. For most projects, this is the second time we are reviewing your information, so it would be very helpful if you could please give us a brief overview of the project. To remind us what you're planning and then clearly identify any changes that have been made since the last time we saw you. When the applicant is done presenting and any clarifications have been reviewed, we will open the public hearing and allow members of the community to speak about the applicant's proposal. After the commission has heard from all community members interested in speaking tonight, the public hearing will be closed and the commission will deliberate. Uh, to our applicants, when your project name is called, please come to the microphone and start off by giving the name and address of any members of the applicant's team that are planning to speak for our public record. And to anyone from the community that will be speaking in regard to a project tonight, please also start off by stating your name and address for our records. Alright, so tonight, our first public hearing is for the applicant Charlie Ackerman. The project address is twenty-three East Clinton Street. And this is a site plan review and special use permit for the conversion of a portion of the ground floor of an existing building into two two-bedroom dwelling units, resulting in five total dwelling units in the C-one service commercial district.
Hello, uh, Charlie Ackerman, one ninety-two Front Street, Binghamton. Uh, so I am looking to take twenty-three East Clinton, uh, which is on the corner of Clinton and Water Street. Uh, and adding two two-bedroom apartments on the first floor with a thirty-foot setback. Uh, we're still going to have space available for a commercial in the front of the building. And, uh, yeah, that's, that's pretty much the story there. There will be parking available for these, uh, units as required.
Alright. And I think based on our last meeting, you really had no exterior upgrades planned for this project.
None other than that big beautiful mural that I painted on there.
Yeah.
We're having an opening on Friday, if anyone would like to come by. Twenty-three East Clinton. It's gorgeous, sadar painted it.
It does look nice.
Thank you very much.
Were you out there with a, helping at all or?
Just, just paying him. That's all that I did.
Uh, alright, well, this, uh, this is a public hearing, so let's, uh, open the public hearing. Uh, if you don't mind taking a seat back while the public hearing is open. Yeah.
We amended this that they did have to have garbage.
Oh. Hot back up there.
So I did get an email from y'all about, uh, uh, garbage. So I have, uh, contracted with Taylor Garbage to get, uh, roll behind trash cans that will be provided in the backyard of another property I own at twenty-five East Clinton. With a common alleyway between them, so that, uh, everybody can keep their garbage there.
Thank you.
Alright.
Does that work?
Yeah, excellent. Alright, so this is the public hearing for the applicant Charlie Ackerman. The project address is twenty-three East Clinton Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the conversion of a portion of the ground floor of an existing building into two two-bedroom dwelling units, resulting in five total dwelling units in the C-one service commercial district. Uh, if there's anybody here that would like to speak about the project, please come to the microphone.
Hi, uh, I'm Tim O'Neill. I've, uh, own two eighty-two eighty-six Water Street. For just shy of forty years. Uh, I was called into or notified to come to this meeting about five years ago. When you guys were discussing. It was finalizing the revert, conversion of the old boys' club to housing. And then on the docket was taking that old hotel and converting that into additional housing. Uh, I actually came because I had damage to my property. I had two utility poles. One was snapped by an excavator. Uh, Mr. Finley was in control of that. I don't, I don't recognize a lot of people. You're not in your head, so you're aware of that. So he snapped the utility pole, promising to replace it. But I sat in the back as I just did now. I listened to Mr. Finley trying to pitch his proposal to you for continuing to the renovation of that old hotel that it's quite a project undertake if you've been by that place. Uh, Mr. Finley continued on and said he had reached an agreement with myself, with Tim O'Neill. I have an agreement for the parking that he needed. I had never met Mr. Finley. Although he was up here telling you he had an agreement with me, I had never met him. That was the first time I ever laid eyes on Mr. Finley. So what he was telling you was, let's say untrue. You had chose, or the, this council chose to take that up in the, in the next meeting. You were gonna table it to the next meeting. I offered to try to resolve that situation because I have those two parking lots. I was advised by my lawyer after I left, uh, to get the minutes of the meeting, get the date of the next meeting, to come in. And we could work out something. When I went to get the meetings at the planning department the next day, I found out that after I left. This committee, this council passed. You allowed him to go forward. With, you had changed the whole narrative and said that, well, it's now a, um, I don't know, historical site or something, and then allowed him to proceed with that. It, but I don't know, I don't quite understand if somebody could explain to me why it was such urgency to pass it that night. Yet nothing has been done to that building since that night, so for like six years. But I was under this understanding when I left that you were going to at least table it, we'd have a discussion. I was willing to participate with that. And so when I entered, when I received this about Mr. Ackerman's, uh, going to want, he, he has no chance of having parking available for what he's proposing to do. There's no way he meets that requirement, not in the wildest imagination. Even though I've heard rumor of, well, not everybody's gonna have a car. Well, I don't know how you could envision that, that student's not gonna have a car. Or how would you do that for continuation for several years? Because the decisions you make now affect this community for years to come. Right? And I give you guys credit. I think this process is, is very worthy thing to come in and let people uh, voice their opinion, but there is laws, right? So building codes and planning is based on laws. It's not just a suggestion that you have. It's, it's, it's this like proof that we've over time have discovered that you would need appropriate parking and appropriate things for, to support that type of, uh, housing. It happened several years earlier when Frank Whitney, I don't know, some of you older people here know Frank Whitney, it's the Whitney family. He owned that place on the corner of Lewis and Washington. Um, it was a copy machines and so forth, and that was warehousing. That was also converted into student housing. And I can tell you how many truckloads of garbage and red solo cups and stuff that, because I became a dumpster. Everything that they used, they just threw over. Some of those actually wrapped in bags and thrown over. Other was just discarded over on my property. So I've been dealing with that forever. They knocked down a retaining wall because they had to allow more snow to access to, to give all those students cars access for that parking lot. So to be, to go back to, you passed you approved that like forty units or thirty units, multi, I don't know, there was gonna be forty people staying in that old boarding home or that old hotel. It was something like forty-some requirements for parking. And I think the requirement says it has to be within five hundred feet or three hundred feet of the dwelling. Because I bordered that. I bordered the Whitney property. I bordered behind that old, old hotel. Behind the boys' gap. And on East Clinton, I had that big, you know, rectangular piece, so that L shape, I am a neighbor to each and every one of them. But I've been willing to work with these things. And when, when the people who owned this property prior to Mr. Ackerman. They used to tell them it was, uh, Iran Queller. I had met him only on one or two occasions, uh, never could do business with him. He was not living in the area, represented a group from outside of the area. Told and it's hearsay, if he told his people renting, his tenants, that they could park there. Well, I didn't wanna sell students' cars away. No one wins. I don't win. I make enemies. I don't make money by towing them. I just wanted them off my property. So I, I blocked off that property with the landscape timbers. Um, if you guys know what a landscape timber weighs, ten by ten and ten feet long, they're pretty hefty. They're
Yeah.
I had them all supported around. I had a contractor come in, purchased them, put them up, trying to keep people out. With limited use for several years. It had gotten uneven and some overgrowth and so forth. So I, I took the time to in money, over ten thousand dollars to resurface a, a lot of the majority of it. Clear all the debris and the, the overgrowth and so forth. But I could not keep people out of there. It's just, they just overrun me. And even though we, we passed it, I had a welder come in with steel pipes, cut them and aim from to the ground, and they came in and lifted them up. It's not somebody, it's not like getting out and moving a cone. You'd have to, have coordinated effort to do something like this. And so this is what I've been battling with for years and years. If you've already approved the, I don't, I don't know how to label it, but that old hotel, I, I don't know if there's a name for that.
I have no idea.
Okay. Right, right. Right.
I know I'm probably out of water.
No, go ahead. You're good.
To encourage you, if you have specific objections to Mr. Ackerman's application, address those now. If you have concerns about forty-five other properties are not before us tonight, hang around until new business.
Right.
And I'll hang out here for four hours.
So I think it's important to, if we realize that that other project that you had approved is going to go through and there's and you have, by putting it into an historical site, you waived the the, um, law that says you had to have so many parking spots, which was like overboard. So my question to you then is, if you do finish that project one year, two years, three years from now, and then there's forty people without places to park. And you're gonna give this project a waiver for additional parking that can only support five but needs twelve? So now you've increased, you, you've got fifty people that have no places to park. I, I don't think that you could, I've tried to work with Mr. Ackerman before. We, we re- just recently met a, a year ago. And it was his tenants that were removing those supports. To the point where I reached out to him and asked him to keep his controllers tenants. And to paraphrase Mr. uh, Ackerman is, uh, they're hard-headed, I can't do that. And so I had to go down and file several police reports, several calls to the police. But I don't wish to burden the, the local police with petty stuff like this. But I had to do it with a, for a safety reason, because I have people that work for me who are going down and replacing these all the times. And I didn't wanna have some type of confrontation get out of here.
Okay.
And it was really for the safety of everybody involved.
Mr. O'Neill, are you, would, would you say that you're kinda want us to object to, um, giving him the, the, the allowance for?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The, there is no parking available to support that type of, uh, expansion of the, the student housing there. Especially if that other project that you approved goes through. We, we have a real situation. You know, so I wish him the best of luck and everything. I have no personal, you know, problems with Mr. Ackerman. I wish he had been more helpful. He could have been a nicer neighbor and, and, you know, worked together with me, but uh, that didn't happen, but I don't hold animosity towards him. I wish him the best, but but that's the law. They are laws and, and there's a reason for parking requirements. And I think you should go back to what the rule says and, and when any more development in that little area.
Alright. Thank you.
Do you have any questions for me? And thank you for doing that. I mean, I appreciate that, but I wanted to show you that there was the possibility to pre- now, we have a news problem and there's no coming back.
Alright, thank you. Alright, anybody else who would like to comment about this project? Alright, seeing nobody else approaching the microphone, we'll close the public hearing for this project. Mr. Ackerman, if you can come back up. So you can respond in any way you'd like to the, uh,
Actually, before you do, I'm gonna ask this, just based on what I'm reading here and, and if, if Mr. O'Neill, who's walking back to seats, wants to overhear this. Um, just to make sure we get this on the record. So if I'm reading the application in the staff report correctly, the proposal requires two parking spots.
That's correct.
And based on the, the photos I'm seeing of this lot, there is a uh, a parking lot already paved that's sort of facing, I'll say, I'll call it like a Water Street direction.
Nineteen East Clinton.
Okay. And there appears to be at least Okay, and there appears to be at least spots for two cars there, so that should meet. The requirements for parking for this application, correct?
That's correct.
Mr. O'Neil, I'm sorry, so this isn't a dialogue. This is, so you you got your chance to talk about it. I but it's not, it's not a time to 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 get into a debate about it. So you had your time to to comment on the the application that was before us. We heard what you were saying. It it. A- after the meeting, if you want to wait around. This isn't a, it's not. That's part of the code. That's a much bigger issue than, it's not something we could debate right now. Um, if you want to stick around and talk to us afterwards about the code requirements.
So the existing building is a legal nonconforming building, twenty-three East Clinton Street has three units in it and commercial space. That do not have parking. It's a zero lot line building on that lot. What Mr. Ackerman is proposing.
Which is legal, which is legal as is?
Yeah, it's legal nonconforming, meaning if he were to build it today, it would not be allowed, but it was built a very long time ago, and so it's legal, nonconforming. AKA grandfathered in. He is expanding on that, so the expansion needs to meet the current code. He's adding two units with two bedrooms, bedrooms each. Each one of those units needs a parking space. That's being provided at nineteen East Clinton Street.
So then for the record, Tito, just to make sure everybody in the room understands. The current three bedrooms, which are grandfathered in with no parking requirements. Is outside of the purview of the planning commission.
In terms of parking, yes. In terms of the land use, no, because those three are added to the two that gets them five units. That requires a special use permit. That's why he's here today. But as far as the application of the parking requirements, that only applies to the expansion.
Alright. Alright, any questions? Or actually, do you want to respond to the uh? The comments that were made in any way?
No, that's okay. Thank you.
Okay. Alright, any questions, comments about what was said? Chris?
Yeah, since you get this on the record, Mr. Ackerman. Um, can can you address for us the concerns that were raised about the tree timbers? On this property line, then it's possible that some of your tenants had been moving, damaging, removing.
That it's absolutely true. Uh, there were tenants on the first floor when uh he reached out. We had entered a verbal agreement to lease his parking place is his parking lot so that I could hopefully add a cafe. Right now there is such limited parking in my parking lot. There's only six parking spots and on Washington, on uh uh Clinton. There's absolutely no parking whatsoever. On Water Street, there is absolutely no parking whatsoever, no street parking at all. Uh, the closest parking uh is around the corner in front of City Church. Or at the Doubletree, the the closest street parking. So I had spoken with him about renting out his lot so that I could put a cafe. Or some sort of commercial business at that site. Uh, we entered into a verbal agreement. I had tenants there. Uh, that uh uh. Were not the greatest tenants, but completely legal in the state of New York, uh, but ish. But uh, I worked with uh zoning and had them removed, but anyhow, the the tenants that were there went and removed them. When I had said, hey, I think I struck a deal to get that parking, they went ahead and went ham and removed them. I spoke to him immediately, told them to. Put them back as soon as he told me there was a problem. I said, put them back. I believe I referred to them as knuckleheads is what I said, uh, just meaning that they were. Not thinking correctly, and I'm terribly sorry. I offered to put them back myself, to have my guys go put them back and to do something about them. Uh, and then he entered into an agreement with Ray's Auto to have a a wrecking yard there. Which is, you know, I would have rather a cafe, but. Uh, but that is the story is at least my, you know, if we're going to go, he said, she said, that would be uh. Uh, my end of it, but as a result now, because I have no parking, I have a thirteen hundred square foot storefront. That I am probably going to have a great deal of trouble renting out because there's just those six parking spots on the side. Two of which are going to go to these apartments. Uh, so it it's going to be difficult to figure out something for that storefront, but uh, but I do meet the legal requirements to have the apartments. On the first floor now as is, and I hope that I can move forward.
Alright.
Can you talk again about the garbage, what you're going to do?
Sure, I also own the property at twenty-five East Clinton, which is a uh. Uh, which has a a small backyard. Uh, I have an easement on Mr. O'Neil's property that allows for a uh movement through. The the back of my buildings, so twenty-five, twenty-three and nineteen can have an easement that can move through them. And so I'm going to put the garbage in the backyard of twenty-five East Clinton. Uh, the tenants there are very excited to have the garbage cans themselves and not have to deal with the blue bags. So, yes.
If um they no longer own the building like in a few years, that could be a problem, I see.
I could certainly write an easement that that would uh uh put an easement on that building for the garbage for the rest of them.
If the planning commission does approve the project, we we suggest that it be subject to. A revised plan showing the location of the garbage cans on twenty-five East Clinton Street.
And an easement, right?
Easement if if the commission thinks it's appropriate.
Does everybody think that's appropriate?
The staff report also mentioned a fence or some sort of barrier on the parking lot at uh nineteen. To try to mitigate some of that trespassing on Mr. O'Neil's lot.
Yeah, I think at the last meeting, you said you were amenable to that as well.
That's fine, I'll put a fence.
Alright, so if we make that a condition of approval, that a fence would be along the border of nineteen Clinton Street?
It's fine.
Alright, the northern border.
The revised plan should show that as well in addition to the garbage.
Alright. Alright, any other questions, comments, concerns? Alright, seeing no other questions or comments, uh, I'll make a motion. Um, so the. Proposed. For the proposal involves the reuse of an existing commercial building, which was a type-two action, so no further environmental review is required. So therefore, I'll make a motion that the requirements for site plan review and special use permit have been met. Contingent on a revised site plan being submitted to the planning department. That shows garbage can storage on twenty-five Clinton Street. And a proposed easement. Leading to those, the garbage storage area. And a fence on the border of nineteen Clinton Street. As discussed in this meeting. Alright, so good by Chris, all in favor? Alright, Kelly, was your hand up? Okay, so that's six in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much.
Alright, you're welcome. Alright. Onto our next public hearing. Uh, next public hearing is for the applicant James Slocum. Project address is fifty-three Shenango Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the conversion of the upper stories of an existing commercial building to fifty-six dwelling units in the C two downtown business district. Welcome back.
Hi, James Slocum, eighty-one State Street. I am back for the uh partial conversion of fifty-three Shenango Street. Um. Turning uh several of the floors into uh sixty-three dwelling units with a total of eighty-seven bedrooms. The conversions will uh. Impact floors uh two through eight. On the uh tower side and two and three, one, two and three on the wing side without. Uh, affecting the uh ground level retail space. Uh, since our last meeting, uh, we added a uh site plan in, uh, the existing. Uh, sub-basement was added to the plans just for perspective. Um. And on the uh basement level. We added a uh dotted line across it to show uh the difference in elevation between the the tower and the. Uh, wing or western section of the building. Um, what is considered the basement for the tower is ground level for uh the west side of the building. Does everyone have a floor plan in front of them?
Yes.
Jim, I'm sorry, just to clarify, the below grade and first floor are not at all part of the proposal. No modifications are proposed, and there won't be any amenity space on those floors that caters to the residential tenants.
Uh, we are requesting to put a laundry room and a gym in the basement. If you uh look at A two hundred. Um. The gym and the laundry are center building right off the elevator.
Seeing basement plans, A one hundred?
Uh, I I'm looking at the A two hundred uh proposed basement plans. Uh, if you if you look over there, it still shows existing basement plan, but. Um, there there is a laundry and a a gym. Uh, outlined on the. Left side of the page towards the bottom.
I have A two hundred is proposed first floor plan in what I have here.
Yeah, me too.
Well, I have extra floor plans. Can I pass them out?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Slocum, just to make sure everybody's on the same page, the papers that have just been distributed. These are updated from whatever PDFs, it may have been previously, these are, these are the newest, most up to date?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to close.
I just want to note that we passed an amendment uh recently about uh residential amenity spaces below grade. Um. And. Uh, any assembly spaces other than amenity spaces that are accessory. So the only amenity spaces that are allowed for a multi-unit dwelling with this many units would be structured parking, laundry and storage. And those have to be partitioned, laundry and storage spaces have to be partitioned so that they do not. Um, the have an occupancy limit above ten people. Um, the occupants, the limit is set by the fire marshal. Um. But Mr. Slocum's designer could could estimate that.
Yes, so all of these uh. Walls are are pre-existing, so we uh took a room that was. Thirteen by twenty-eight, I believe. Um, but if we had to modify or or change the size of that room to meet uh existing uh codes. Then we would obviously uh do that.
Tito, I mean, the gym is not, not really, it's gym's got to go.
It's, yeah, the gym's not permitted. And that that space would have to be partitioned so that it's smaller. Uh, a gym would be allowed above grade.
Alright, what does that do to your plan?
Um, very little, takes away some amenities, but um it doesn't change the project law. Cross off the gym and we still have uh the the ground level that runs um. Along Henry Street that uh, you know, we don't actively have a use for. We're kind of uh uh waiting on um an existing tenant that may need more space to see if they want it. Um, if not, then. Perhaps at a later date, that'll be a good place for a gym.
Okay.
What's in the sub-basement?
Uh, the sub-basement is currently uh the cave. It's a nightclub. Pre-existing nightclub, they're open uh Friday night and Saturday night, only to my knowledge.
And you're not planning any changes to that at all?
No.
Nick?
Yeah.
Um, and just to get on the record, uh, one more time, we, I think we may discuss this the last meeting. Uh, given the increase in tenants um under this proposed plan, what's the plan for garbage and trash?
Uh, so on the site plan, we did have add a a fenced in uh area for the dumpster. Uh, where a pre-existing dumpster sits. Um, so the the garbage plan is to uh keep it in the same location. But uh, the fence and the. The the location of the dumpster.
Increasing the volume of the dumpster or any a larger dump or more dumpsters or what's the plan with that? Cause I'm I'm guessing. So many more residential tenants might be producing different volumes of garbage than current commercial tenants.
I found them to be pretty similar in the past, uh, but there is room to expand if need be. We can certainly uh uh get a larger dumpster in that space.
Tito, this question is for you. Does whatever's been updated here on the uh drawings about. Dumpster locations and fencing, does that meet planning requirements and whatever?
Yeah, the what the code requires is that a multi-unit dwelling has to have a dumpster and it has to have to be enclosed. Um. It would be good to give details on the enclosure. It it's supposed to be opaque and at least six feet tall, um, so that should be noted on the plan. The code does not specify how much garbage. Capacity there has to be, though. That's up to the planning commission.
That could be a condition then.
Alright, well, let's do this. Let's uh open the public hearing and see if there's anybody here to talk about the project. And then. We'll come back to this. Alright, so this is the public hearing for the applicant. All right, so this is the public hearing for the applicant James Slocum, the project address is fifty-three Shenango Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the conversion of the upper stories. Of an existing commercial building to fifty-six dwelling units in the C two downtown business district. If there's anybody that would like to speak about the project, please come to the microphone.
Hello, I'm Nate Hotchkiss, I live at twenty-one Frederick Street, um. I, I'm assuming that this is all for student housing and I know I'm like asking you a question and you're not supposed to answer, but I think. Can I do that?
Uh. Mr. Slocum, do you mind saying whether or not this is a student housing project? Okay.
Okay. All right, so. Yeah, um, I think about housing a lot and I know that we're in a housing crisis and I talked to a lot of. Uh, residents in the area about like what their housing needs are, um, what their housing experience is. And I think somebody wrapped it up like pretty, pretty plainly recently and they just said that housing in Binghamton is hell. And I think that's, a lot of people agree that it's due partially to the expansion of student housing. Um, in Binghamton and I think that really we need to consider curtailing that to make sure that there is more. Um, housing for other people and if he's saying, um, that this is like market rate housing, I'm gonna take him at his word for that, but. I think everybody knows gym and faircat housing like is, is typically caters to, um, students. Um. What else do I want to say? I, I really love the idea of converting office space into, uh, more residential dwelling units. Because there is such a high demand for that and like, uh, with, uh. With COVID and people taking up more remote jobs, uh, office spaces in less demand and people can work from home. And creating more residential things downtown, I think that's great for like the local businesses that require like foot traffic, so I'm, I'm all for that. However, it's just when we. Are catering everything towards student housing, it makes a, like a seasonal economy. And it, it makes it harder for, I think, um, smaller businesses to, to thrive or survive. And I know a lot of them like went out of business in, during COVID and the, uh. Potential for any, uh. Redevelopment or opening is like, it feels like a little bit more shakier and riskier. Um, if I was to be thinking about opening a small business, um. Yeah, I don't know if you guys regulate whether or not like there is, it's student or not. Or if there's anything that we can do to try to make sure that, uh, local people have more housing options available. I think that would be really important to consider, so that's all.
All right, thank you. All right, anybody else?
Hi, I'm Terry Weathers. I live at, uh, twenty Rockford Street in Binghamton. Um, I just have a few questions. Um, is this area, so is it no longer zone C two or is this? Did you already decide that it's not? That you've changed the zoning from C two, which is, um. Business and not residential or have, do we already changed that for this building?
Uh, Tito could answer that.
Yeah, the, the zoning district hasn't changed, C two does allow, uh, residential uses. On the upper stories and on the rears of the ground floor.
And so then that, so it can get through because the ground floor is just a lobby with elevator banks? So is that how it doesn't need to be rezoned for residential here? I'm just, I'm just curious, there's. There is no, like already no place to really park down there, um, so. I was just there the other day with the no longer current tenants that were being evicted, helping get furniture out of the building. Um, and. So like in order to put apartments in there, that means people are gonna live there, that means people will need places to park, that means. More bathrooms, et cetera. I understand that it's already zoned for residential, but it doesn't, that doesn't really make sense. Because there's going to be so much more waste, not just garbage, but human plumbing. Um, water usage, so much more going on down there, that it doesn't really make sense that. It's already okay to put eighty-three bedrooms. Into a building that currently has twelve offices, eighteen, twenty offices, something like that. Um, so I'm kind of questioning, is, is this a, a done deal and I hear late? Um, did we find out about it too late?
We can take your comment and ask the applicant to respond after the public hearing.
Okay. Um, so is there going to be another hearing on this or is this it? Is this?
Uh, if the commission is in favor of the project, then tonight would be the last meeting, yes.
So there is no chance for anybody to do anything else. Right now. This is going to go through, even though some of us just found out about it.
I'm not really sure how to answer that question.
We haven't cast a vote, I mean, I guess it's conceivable, we could be voting to deny the application tonight.
Okay, what are the odds you're gonna vote to deny the application tonight? Okay, um, but I. Are you saying that I may change all of your minds just by sitting here and asking questions? Is that what you're telling me? You don't know how you're gonna vote yet? Okay, so then if there is a chance, I urge you to wait. And give the public a chance to weigh in because I know that I just found out about this Saturday when I was helping people move furniture. So I, you know, maybe I'm not, that's, that's me for not being engaged enough. Um, but. I would urge you to postpone your vote then and give the public a chance to speak. And that's it for me.
All right, thank you. Uh, anybody else who would like to speak about the project?
Nick, may I ask, since there's some students present, we might, uh, just briefly speak about how we, uh, go about letting the public know of these public hearings?
Yep.
Thank you.
Aspects of planning.
So, uh, before, uh, a week before the meeting, the applicant has to post a public notice sign on the property, uh, facing all frontages. With details of, of what the project is and information on how to contact the planning department for more information. We also mail, uh, the same legal notice or a more detailed version of the legal notice to all property owners within two hundred feet. And we also put the legal notice in the Preston Sun Bulletin. So the, the timing of it is so that the, uh, mailings and the notice in the paper, uh, should get to people, uh, a week be- before the meeting.
All right. Seeing nobody else approaching the microphone, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, we'll give you the opportunity to respond to any comments that were made.
I don't have a, a, a ton of comments, um, you know, it's. The zoning is, um, what the zoning is, we, uh, went through a, a recent change in the zoning and, uh, you know. To be honest, part of this project is, is coming from, uh, the sale of, of. Uh, other properties that we were told were no longer, uh, in a student zone. Now, that's not to indicate that we're going to put, uh, students in that zone, but. Um, from my experience, it's, it's difficult to fill, um. Larger houses in Binghamton with, uh, families. Um, there, there's tax incentives, uh, for owner occupied housing. Um, and landlords, uh, make money, so. Typically speaking, the families that, that do pay their rent and, uh. Pay the rent on time and do everything right, unfortunately, uh, they don't financially see the benefit of the, um. Homeowner tax credits and also they, they pay a premium which, you know, goes to landlords paying for tenants that don't pay their rent. Uh, it's a very difficult market to rent, uh, larger houses in and, and that's predominantly, um. Why we're totally comfortable, I mean, with the exception of, uh. I believe two three-bedroom units on this, on this, um. Floor plan that kind of just ended up. With, you know, nothing else to do but put a three-bedroom on the end of, of one side of the building. All of our units are one and two bedrooms. Um, and, and that's where we see, uh, the success with renting to, uh. Locals, students, traveling professionals, um, you know, and, and all of the above, uh, so this is. Um, you know, this isn't a, a student housing development, it's a market rate development. Um, and, and. I'm not, uh. Naive or blind to the housing issues in Binghamton, I, I'm, I'm a local guy, I'm from Binghamton. I grew up right on Matthew Street on the west side and, uh, you know, listen, when I go out to, um. Have some drinks with my friends, I, I get the exact same thing from my friends that, that the first gentleman said, uh, so I'm, I. I don't disagree with them. I don't think that this project is, is that, and I don't think that, um. I, I don't think that, that putting housing here, uh, negatively affects anyone. Prior to, uh, the purchase of this property, uh, it had been three years since the owner was able to find a new commercial tenant. Uh, while he lost half of his tenants. You know, the, the sad truth is, is that during COVID, a lot of businesses didn't come back. Some of them realized that they didn't need as much space and, and could work, uh, partially from home, partially from the office. And, uh, there's a lot of buildings and downtown commercial buildings that are half full.
All right. Yeah, Chris?
Um, a couple of questions that were brought up during the public hearing, I'd like to get addressed, um. Tito, I'm gonna address this to start with, with you, um, one of the questions that was addressed was parking. So what is the parking requirements for an application like this?
For existing buildings downtown, there's no parking requirement, um, unless it's a residential unit with four or more bedrooms. Uh, so none of these, none of these require parking, um, I will point out that this abuts a public parking garage.
So, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, i- if I could additionally, we, uh, uh, currently have. The, the, the half of the building that was, maybe half the building, probably culture to, to a third of the building that was actually occupied. Uh, did have sixty spots in the, uh, uh, neighboring parking ramp.
And that was an agreement you had with the, the parking ramp as the owner or the previous owner had?
Yes, correct.
Um, second question, Tito, I'll start with you, um, that was also brought up in the public hearing, uh, question about water and sewage. So something, I won't lie to you, I don't know if I ever even think to ask questions about this. What are the rules when there's different, you know, commercial going to residential, new construction going on? Is planning and code on top of, is there appropriate water and sewage coverage for this proposed?
Yeah.
Thing.
Yeah, so that'll, that'll be handled through the permitting process, so, um. The building department, building and construction department would, would review that.
I just, um, have a comment, the plans that, uh, Mr. Slocum gave us. Showed units on the first floor. The plans that were handed out today. Um, the plans that are on base camp do not, and the first floor should not have residential uses facing the street. Um, so. If I could, the, uh, the floors are, are labeled by the elevator, the elevators are in the tower section of the building. So the, uh. The bedrooms that are, the, the units that are labeled first floor are fifteen feet, uh, above ground level. If you have a, a picture of the, uh. The, the staff and, and com- staff comments, um. It's the. Second set of windows, um. On, uh, on the building.
So there's no office space on the first floor?
There, there is office space on the first floor, I guess that's kind of why we put the line on it so you could see the, um. On the basement, so you could see the, uh, grade difference. Uh, going along the Henry Street side, the ground level is a, a retail office space. Um, that's, that's called the basement on the plan, but it's really ground level.
Is that the spot occupied by the vet center now?
Uh, no, the vet center, uh, who is, is staying and, and who we hope to, uh, eventually move into the ground level space. Uh, is on the first floor of the tower side. It's, it's not just an elevator bank or they.
You enter through the ground level.
Yeah, there's about a five thousand square foot office there.
Does that fifteen-foot elevation comply with city code and zoning?
What the code says is that the ground level, so at grade, um, cannot be residential.
And just so I understand and clarify the parking situation, because I am sensitive to that, sounds like you're basically in the same boat as if you still had. Rieger advertising, Exelus and whoever the previous business tenants were, that now is set vacant for three years.
Yeah.
Now with the people you want to bring in.
Yeah, I mean, i- it's never exact, but, um, you know, it's hard for me to believe that we would have more than sixty people that need parking. Um, you know, additionally, uh, last I checked, that ramp was not full. Um, you know, I think a lot of the parking that, um, people are upset about is the parking on the street and. To my knowledge, none of the parking on the street around the building are, i- is overnight parking, it's, it's meter parking.
Not every student has a car either, so despite the stereotype that all of them have it, sometimes it's desirable not to have one.
Sure, sure, but you know, again, uh, we're not planning on, on having. Only students there, so we're gonna, you know, the numbers may vary.
But, uh, as part of, uh, a possible approval, would you be okay with it being contingent on entering into a similar parking agreement with the, the adjacent ramp?
Um. We act as a pastor for the current commercial tenants, uh, we wouldn't want to be in charge of, of collecting rents for the, uh, uh, residential tenants. Um, you know, it's a, it's a electronic system, um, the guy at the, at the parking ramp, Carl, can. Uh, zap their card if it's not paid and, and we don't really want to be in the middle of, of. Purchasing the parking or forcing parking or determining how many numbers of, of parking spaces that they'll actually need. The C, the C two district, um, doesn't have any parking requirements for one to three bedrooms.
But I think, uh, given the fact that you're taking office space that would have, you know, had parking. But I think, given the fact that you're taking off a space that would have, you know, had parking and replacing it with. Residents that, I mean, if we're being realistic, probably a good deal of them will require parking. I I think it would. Not be unreasonable for us to require some kind of mitigation for any increase. I think we can, right?
Yeah, we can talk about it, yeah.
Anyone else uh have an opinion?
I have a bit of a different question. Um, the former use of the building. What were the major, was it commercial or like like industry? You mentioned veterans, but who else? That whole building, who else was in there?
Uh, so there was a lot of a lot of business that was gone before I was involved with the building, but. Um, Rieger was there, um, uh, Holbert Engineering was there.
Okay.
Uh, the Veterans Administration uh is still there. Uh, there's there's several small offices, um, kind of sole proprietorships, but. Uh, the majority of the large businesses have moved down already.
Holbert moved to a different location?
Holbert is moving to a different location.
Okay, they're in there now.
Uh.
They were, they were in there.
One foot in, one foot out, I believe.
Okay, cuz I used to go in there working.
Yeah.
Going projects. So all these businesses opted to go mostly other places. I mean, it doesn't sound like they're like like IBM, they just went out of business. Most of them seem to have moved out, not interested in that central location.
Correct.
So, basically, you're looking at putting some things back into it.
Yes.
I do like the idea of working with the neighboring parking garage to offer parking, but if the zoning does not require. Parking for one, two, and three bedroom apartments. You know, and are we overstepping to make that a contingency?
No, when when a use requires a special use permit, the planning commission can. Within reason, uh, go beyond the code and and require things that you think will mitigate. Um, any potential impact from the project.
So Jim, just say once again, so the parking garage is right next door, and your position is that if somebody needed a parking pass. They would just go over to the parking garage and make their own deal to get a parking permit for that parking garage. And you you don't want to get in the middle of that.
We don't have a, we don't have any objection to to uh get in the middle of it and to help set it up um at all. I I guess my only uh uh. Concerns with something like that are uh the number of spots. Um, for one, and and for two, if if we have a uh. Time of vacancy, if we ha- you know, if we take, uh, you know, two years to develop, I I don't need those spots. Um, so it's it's, you know, I don't want to um. I I don't want to over commit to something, and uh, you know, I I kind of, you know, other other projects similar to this. Um, you know, haven't been required to do so, and I know that you have the ability to. Uh, force us to do so, but it seems like a natural um place to park for someone who lived right next to the parking garage. And I don't think that, you know, we want to be involved with the the. Collection and the the payment on behalf of all the tenants. It just adds a extra layer of of. Uh, uh, work and risk on our on our end.
Okay. I I mean, I can definitely appreciate your position. Uh, I guess my perspective is if if we were constructing a a new residential building. We would require parking and the parking that was previously spoken for. Was office workday parking, so you would have cars in the parking garage, but they'd be gone at night. These gonna, this is gonna be a residential uh facility. People are going to park at night overnight, so. I I don't think it's going to be a uh a a one-to-one difference in terms of the parking needs based on the new use. So I would feel better if there was parking spoken for, just because, again. If this was a new residential development, we would make sure that there was parking spoken for, and I am personally, even though. It's not quite within the code, I'm personally feeling that, you know, the spirit of the code would require us to. Make sure there was parking for all these new residents.
Okay. Uh, Jim. From your perspective, what would be a reasonable number of parking spaces that would? Should be tied to this application that would be reasonable? Not too many that you have empty that you're paying for that you don't need, but reasonably would be used.
I I would anticipate, um, you know, typically about fifty percent of tenants will will have a vehicle.
Okay.
I'd be okay with, uh, I guess that'd be about thirty spaces.
Yeah, twenty eight spaces, there's twenty eight spaces?
Twenty eight spaces.
Is that a reasonable contingent approval?
If if that makes everyone feel better, yes, I I don't think we'll have any issues with twenty eight spots. Um. My bigger concern was, you know, eighty spots and then having. You know, ninety bucks a a parking spot, I didn't want to have twenty spots that uh weren't being used.
Right, sure. Does everybody feel comfortable with twenty eight spots? Is that a compromise? It it could just be prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, so that when the building is is ready to be occupied. He would get get the agreement at that time.
Everyone okay with that?
Okay. I just, I'm just trying to clarify one thing here, that the application is for fifty six units. The plans that are on base camp show fifty six units on floor two through eight and non-residential space on four one. The plans we have today show. Seven units on four one in addition to the fifty six above that. Which would be sixty three spaces. So unless I'm counting wrong, um, there's a discrepancy there. The thirteen units on four two and three each. Twenty six. And then one, two, three, four, five, six units. Of course, four through eight, so that's four, five, six, seven, eight, each have six units.
The applicant also said sixty three units when he was talking.
So everything we've gotten up until today has has been for fifty six units. That's what the public notice stated, um. And so if the plans are amended now to add more units, that's something that would have to be renoticed.
We'll drop the first floor apartments or the the, you know, the first floor apartments on the wing, I'll drop those.
Alright, so tear out page A two oh one at this for this particular review. Or we would keep the the original first floor plan that showed uh office spaces. Right, what what's on base camp is what we would, what you would be considering.
Yeah, would it be helpful if the drawing came up with at least a preliminary room number for each room? Like room one oh one or one oh two, so you would know which ones are which.
Uh, so the units are numbered on there, um, the rooms are not, but. Alright, so we're gonna, we're gonna refer to drawing A one oh one. As what's gonna remain for the first floor. Uh, existing first west floor plan. Correct. And then everything else is all part of the original application. Right. Okay. Alright, is everyone okay with that now? Okay. Alright, any other questions or concerns?
Uh, could you make the motion because you have all the notes on those requirements, please?
Uh, yes. Yep, alright. Alright, so you know other questions or comments, um? Did we close, did I close the public hearing? Well, the public hearing is closed, uh, just to make sure we covered that. Um. Alright, the proposal involves the reuse of an existing commercial building, which is a type two action under Seeker, and therefore no further environmental review is required. And I'll make a motion that the requirements for site plan review uh have been met. Sorry, site plan review and special use permit have been met. Uh, contingent on the applicant, um. Providing twenty eight parking spaces. In the adjacent parking garage. Um, and. Those parking spaces aren't needed until the certificate of occupancy is issued. Alright, said goodbye Steve, oh Kelly. Oh, you're right. It's been so long that uh I gotta go back to the first page. Uh, yes, also contingent that the gym be taken off of the basement floor plan. And that that space be broken up into a code compliant um area. And that the label on the dumpster area is amended to call out. Uh, a six foot tall minimum opaque enclosure around the dumpster area. Alright, said goodbye Steve, all in favor? Alright, six in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you.
Alright, good luck.
Thank you.
Alright, our last public hearing tonight is for the applicant Owen Bly. Project address is thirty three Court Street. And this is a site plan review for the conversion of the second floor of an existing mixed-use building into three two-bedroom dwelling units and one office. Resulting in five total dwelling units in the C two downtown business district.
Good evening.
Hello.
Uh, my name is Mark United from MB United Development, and I'm just um here to represent Owen. He's out of town. So I told him I would uh stand in for him. So I believe the updated application was for. Three residential units, two, three, two bedroom residential units. And one that was originally for residential and determined that it was too small, so he's converting it into a. Office studio, same location at thirty three Court Street.
Alright. As far as you know, did any, has anything changed since the last time he was here to today? Nothing's changed. Alright.
Let me check my notes though, but I'm pretty certain no.
Other than that, one studio became an office. Okay. Alright, any questions before we open the public hearing? Alright, alright, so we'll do the public hearing for this one. Alright, so this is the public hearing for the applicant Owen Bly. The project address is thirty three Court Street. This is a site plan review for the conversion of the second floor of an existing mixed-use building into three two-bedroom dwelling units and one office. Resulting in five total dwelling units in the C two downtown business district. Uh, anybody who would like to speak about the project? This is your last chance if you get extra credit for talking at the public hearing tonight. But you better know what the project is if you're gonna speak about it. It's gotta be relevant. Alright. Uh, seeing no one approaching the microphone, we'll close the public hearing for this project. Alright. Alright, if I remember from the last meeting, this was pretty straightforward. Any questions, comments, concerns? Alright. Alright, so I'll make a motion that the proposal involves the reuse of an existing mixed-use building, which is a type two action. And no further environmental review is required, and therefore the requirements for the site plan review have been met. Second by Kelly, all in favor? Alright, that's six in favor, zero opposed.
Wish my, I wish my hearings would go this quickly instantly. This is unbelievable.
Alright, so Owen. Alright, that concludes public hearings and final deliberations. So that's means we're on to other business. And we've got one thing under other business for Robinson Street rezoning.
Yeah, so uh, we're proposing rezoning nine parcels on Robinson Street at the intersection of Robinson and Whitney. A review of the zoning in this area was prompted by the Mothers and Babies Project. Their use uh that they're proposing is social services. Social services is not permitted in the industrial district. Um, and so when they asked if they could locate there, we took a look at the zoning um and the comprehensive plan and the. Facts on the ground, and we're proposing rezoning that to see for neighborhood commercial. The comp plan says it should be commercial, um, it's all a commercial plaza. Um, and we just believe that it's zoned inappropriately and should be rezoned.
Alright.
What action do we need to take tonight, Tito?
So the planning commission should recommend approval of the rezoning, denial of the rezoning, or. Uh, you can recommend a an amended version of this. You could, absolutely, yeah.
Um, was it the other side of uh Robinson Street? Was there any reason not to include that in the change or?
Those are industrial uses there, and the comprehensive plan did not call for rezoning that that area.
Got you. Alright. Anybody opposed to a recommendation for approval? Chris? Alright, anybody want to make that motion? Alright, Kelly makes a motion for recommendation for approval. Alright, said goodbye Steve, all in favor? Alright, six in favor, zero opposed. Alright, any other business anybody wants to talk about? Chris?
Yeah, um, you know, nothing I want to go through five hours of history tonight. But uh, when Mr. O'Neill spoke at the public hearing, he brought up lots of history, which predates my time on the planning commission. Um, are you familiar with some of these? A ho- some hotel and waiver forty parking space, and did you shed any light on what was brought up earlier? I wish, I wish he was still here so I could.
Yes, um, so two sixty three Washington Street, I believe is the address. It's on the curve of Lewis Street. It it's like a uh, like a spooky abandoned house. Um. Uh, Kevin Finley is redeveloping that or or was, I'm not sure where that stands, uh, into studio apartments. Um, and that was approved by the planning commission. At the time, the commission granted a waiver of of uh. Half the parking requirement or all of it. Um, because it was a local landmark, like you did with the bed and breakfast uh earlier this evening. Um, it wasn't something that was done last minute. I, Mr. O'Neill happened to leave before that discussion was had, but. Um, it has been a landmark since like the sixties, um. And it got, it got a parking waiver. Part of that project also was the Boys and Girls Club, so it's a two, it's a, it's a larger site. And it's a parking lot in between the two buildings, and so Mr. Finley argued that the parking lot in between. Provides some parking, um, even though it was allocated to the uh Boys Club, um, and that. Um, he needed a break in parking to be able to to redevelop uh. The the building to make it feasible, which is the intent of of the code is. If you get rid of that parking requirement, it becomes more affordable to redevelop properties that need to be redeveloped.
if you get rid of that parking requirement, it becomes more affordable to redevelop properties that need to be redeveloped.
Process question, um. When the planning commission and maybe also zoning, um approves a site plan or a special permit, is there a time lapse, like this is only good for a year, five years, ten years, cuz I don't have seen any work going on in this, I could picture that corner. Again, it predates me.
Yeah.
Is there some point where a, a site plan, you know, you haven't done anything with twenty years?
Yeah.
You gotta come back for a new bite at the apple?
So the code says substantial progress has to be made on the site plan, yeah, within a year. Um, and i- it's not specific as to what substantial progress means. But because that project was the Boys Club, the parking lot and the old hotel, he has shown substantial progress just by finishing the Boys Club in the parking lot. So he's kind of like i- in, in limbo, um. If he gets, if he pulls a, a building permit for that building, that has to be built out within a year, um, so those do expire for that building, but the site is basically always gonna be substantially progressed.
A follow-up on Chris's item, uh, two, two things that are not related. One, I'd like to get to past, need that. Building down what Tito said. It, not all these projects that come through get built, that's maybe, that's like Yankees batting average, three hundred, maybe two fifty, five hundred, I don't know what the statistic is, but people come in with high hopes and for one reason or another. There's a percentage of drop that never go past this meet. And we take time and vote on things and hope for the best, but for uh, economics, much higher level in the country. Money's not available, rate rates are up, contractors' plans are too optimistic, not everything comes sooner, it's still well, sometimes we spend hours talking about them. And like, you look, look out there and is it done or not?
All right. Any other business? Want to give the monthly update on the car uh shop on Front Street?
We have uh all of the approvals that were granted for both of those sites uh compiled, they go back to the late eighties, I believe. Um, and now we just have to go through them all and see what he's in violation of. And we're hoping to start taking action later this month.
Okay.
The goal.
All right. Yeah, so the new planters out there, they look nice. All right. Then you can leave them alone. All right. Yeah. Yep. Second by Steve, all in favor? All right, six in favor, zero opposed. Thank you, everyone.